Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Taos County Board of County Commissioners Commission's Special Meeting of Tuesday, May 30, 2023, at 9:00 a.m., actually at 9:01, let's call it to order. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vehil, present. Commissioner Mascherinius.
Present.
Vice Chair Romero.
Present.
Chair Brush.
Present, thank you very much. Commissioner Mascherinius, could I put you, actually no, item three is inspirational devotion, and I'm going to ask our county manager if he would like to say a couple of words, just reflecting on our community this morning.
Thank you, Chair Brush. Good morning, Commissioners. One of the things that came to mind is Commissioner Brush asked me to do this was the prayer, St. Francis, I'm going to recite that. So, Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, let me sow pardon. Where there is doubt, let me sow faith. Where there is despair, let me sow hope. Where there is darkness, let me sow light. Where there is sadness, let me sow joy. O divine master, grant that one that so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love, for its end giving that we receive, and dying that we're born to eternal life. Let's remember the community of Red River and everybody that was affected by the shootings on Saturday, and the shootings across New Mexico also that took place recently in Farmington. There were shootings in Albuquerque last night as well, so let's just pray for peace across our state, across our country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brent, appreciate that. And if everyone could please stand, Commissioner Mascherinius, could I put you on the spot for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll go ahead and start us on the salute to the flag of New Mexico. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Z symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Thank you, everybody. Item six this morning is approval of our agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Question to approve?
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Madam Clark, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Thank you, and item seven this morning is public comments. I'm going to turn the phone off of Do Not Disturb, and if there's anyone watching online, we'll give you a couple of minutes to call in at 575-737-6310. Again, that's 575-737-6310. Okay, I think we're going to assume that people are often about doing their own business and not with us this morning, I'll put us back on Do Not Disturb, and we'll move on to item eight, which is a public hearing. Eight A is discussion on the approval of the 2023-2024 fiscal year interim budget, and we have our interim finance director, Ms. Elsa Vehil, with us. I just want to say good morning, and another gigantic thank you for all of the work that you've put into this. At 9:05 a.m., I'm going to open the public hearing, turn the phone back on, and again, if there is anyone watching and would like to make a comment on this item, the approval of our 2023-2024 interim budget, you can call 575-737-6310, because this discussion is a public hearing.
Yes.
So we'll give it just a moment, give you just a moment before we dive in. And one more time, it is 575-737-6310. All right, Elsa, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you.
All right, Adam, Chair Commission, sorry for the delay in getting this done, it's been tasking in trying to get all these numbers together. So I know we briefly went through this at the last meeting. On the first page, I did, in the rush of trying to get this out, the first page is our budget summary. Under the general fund revenue projected increase, instead of 10.8, it should be 9%. And under general fund expenditure projected increase, it should be 5.7%. I just forgot to change it in the rush of getting this out to all of you.
Could you just repeat those numbers one more time for us?
General fund revenue projected increase is 9%, and the general fund expenditure projected increase is 5.7%.
Thank you.
And do remember, all actuals are based on March 31, 2023. I still included the page of the property tax budget supporting schedule at the 91.5%. As you can see, it's still on there. Under the general revenue, fund revenue, working together with the Treasurer's Office, there were some adjustments that had to be made, had to be decreased and increased. As you notice on the columns on the general fund revenue beside it, you will notice that there was a little bit of a decrease in the grocery receipts tax amount from what was really, what was presented tentatively before. Of course, the 91.5 is at 674,384 for the assessors office. I also decreased a $220,000 out of the sheriff's fees due to, we no longer have that contract with the Village Acuesta, so that income or that revenue is not coming in. And then, as well as, I had the numbers opposite under interest and investment income. So the interest income is budgeted at 4,000, and the investment income is budget 850,000. So they were the opposite originally, and after talking with the treasurer, I had to flip them.
The treasurer gave her the number for, suggested the number for the 850,000.
Yes. And then there was a decrease under reimbursement and refunds due to, you know, it's obvious we didn't get the full 174,000 this current year, so it got reduced to 165, which gives us a dollar change of 1.5. Our interim budget will come in at $18,260,653 for revenue. I also reflected on the graphs, the correct numbers, the general fund expenditures, I did get all of the comp study figures from HR. The only change that may happen to tweak it a little is possibly the health insurance. We're still trying to negotiate to keep it, you know, at no more than 9%, but the projections are between 9 and 12, and we're trying to keep it as low as possible. So right now, she predicted it about, or projected about 9% within the cost of the health insurance for all the employees.
Elsa, could I just interrupt with one question? So the expenditures that you're reflecting here, do you reflect the pay increases that were?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
The pay increases are included in there, I did get them late Friday, therefore that's what the rush was for. So our expenditures did go up to $16,093,093,432, and I did change the pie chart to reflect that as well. I know there was a question from the commission under the governing body section, next page, under the governing body section of that $380,000, which is other operating costs. Those are for the property liability and the land use insurance coverages that we do carry. They were paid late May, early April, about $342,000, so I'm not sure if that's going to go up or not. Kind of predicting it is, as well as it also includes participation fees, which is about $28,600 with NMC, with Taos County.
Yes, Commissioner Vehil, sorry.
Elsa, on the general fund, I'm sorry to take you back.
Sure.
But on the one, the first sheet of the general fund, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I was noticing that the building permit was increased by 90,000. I was just curious, are they seeing, obviously they're seeing more of the, more building permits being obtained?
Yes, quite a bit more from what I understood, and talking with the deputy county treasurer and the treasurer, that is kind of, kind of the prediction or where we're kind of seeing where it's going to be coming at by the end of June. It's quite busy, and they are really going through those fairly quickly. I just assume maybe because a lot of construction got halted the last couple of years, it's just booming right now. There's a lot of construction happening.
So it's not, our fees have not gone up, they're still the same?
No, no, but, you know, worst case scenario, that's what we're projecting that may come in the door.
The way Taos County is always doing preliminary budget, and I don't know why we're having this discussion last week, is they base, a lot of the numbers based on third quarter, so that's why you have that March 31 versus annualizing it. So if you take the building permits fee, divide that by nine, get that figured times 12, it actually comes out to 482,000 if you annualize the current expenditure. So I think the force 40 is pretty doable, and we didn't go up to the 482.
That's good to know, because then we're playing it safe still, right?
Yes, yes, we don't want to over project either, and then
Absolutely.
kind of cut ourselves short.
And then, of course, history, they look at history to make sure that history backs that up.
Yes, and as final comes around, these numbers will be a little more finalized at that point.
Right, and then if I could go on, on that same page?
Sure.
Sheriff's fees, I noticed, was a negative 220,000. Did that just get moved elsewhere, or?
No, no, those were the fees from the last couple MLUs that we had several years ago with the Village Acuesta to provide officers up there.
That's where that shows up.
Yes, so we're not, we're not foreseeing that right now coming back in as revenues for the new current year. Unless something were to change, then of course we'll adjust at that point.
That makes sense. Okay, two more questions on this page, and that is, I noticed interest income and investment income.
Yes.
So on the first one, interest income, it's a negative 46,000. Now, these numbers are acquired from?
The previous year, yes.
Yes, but also from the treasurer, right? As far as interest income and?
Yes, so under invest, under the investment income, she did explain it was going to go a little higher this year versus the interest income.
But because I noticed that on investment income, it was 4,000, and then it went up to 846,000?
Yes.
Was that, that's like a big difference, do you?
It is, it is, and when I was sitting with them, I found out that I had the numbers backwards, because I kind of guessed, and I hate to say this, but I kind of guessed under investment income, if you notice, on March 31, there was 754,000. That was the whole reason why I had 850 on that line item. I will double check with the treasurer to make sure I didn't flip flop them accidentally, but those two kind of go hand in hand.
Got it, yeah, I just thought, wow, we're, you know, I know during COVID, we were sat in it, but, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Any other ones?
No?
Good to have.
Okay.
So I just wanted to explain a little bit about the governing body in terms of that $380,000, I know that was a question at the last meeting, so, you know, we paid about 347,000 with the land use insurance coverage as well, all together, and again, participation fees do fall within that line item. I'm trying to see here what I did here. County probate, as you noticed, there's a lot of these, I was trying to balance out to zero, usually doing preliminary, sometimes I do, and sometimes I don't, which means I have to do a little more work on my end to figure out why. But you'll notice in the interim budget, I still have about 47,850 on there. I think it's more of some adjustments I need to make in terms of, and I think a lot of the savings too also came from the retirement section and the retiree health that was not included in that particular base salary. And the county assessor as well, we have some expenditures that they did, they did provide to us, we met in detail with them. I included all the correct numbers for, right now, for all the benefits and salaries, but it still shows an interim budget of 1.6 remaining. I need to look further into that, just to make sure that I'm not over predicting in terms of expenditures or any of the benefits for the assessors. And you'll notice it on every single one, the clerks, because they remained flat, they also did have a total of 481,786 in expenditures. So I need to look further into a lot of these budgets in terms of operating expenses to see where else they may or may not have thought that they're shorting themselves money, or if there is going to be a cost savings in those departments in that amount. So you'll notice it throughout the general fund, but all the numbers were adjusted. I was pretty close, I was off by a few on majority of the budget, on majority of the salaries and the benefits as I went through them. I was actually kind of proud of myself, I didn't think I was going to get that close to the numbers that HR gave me, but I pretty much did, except for some of the benefits, which they had to tweak a little for me. But if you go to the very, very last page, which is animal control, which has your grand total general fund expenditures, the page I originally gave you is incorrect. I did provide all of you right before the meeting a corrected page where I highlighted in yellow. I was checking all the formulas, but I forgot to check those three at the bottom. So you will notice that the percentages did change, the grand total general fund expenditures is at 5.7%, which gives us in cash balance of 35.5%. I know the original one had said something like 60% and 126, that's, you know, something the county manager caught as well as I did, and made that correction this morning. So, you know, all in all, with the general fund, we look pretty good. I mean, the interim budget comes in at $16,093,432 versus the revenues, which is at 18. What I understood from HR, all the positions that are included in here are also the vacant ones, if we do fill them, so all the funds will be available within those budgets when we do hire on new staff. As well as some departments within the budget that we feel are kind of are knowledgeable, whether or not these individuals will be retiring soon, so also somebody else on annual leave.
Chair, and Ms. Vehil, did I understand you correctly, the ending cash balance is 65, not 35? Or, you did fix that?
No, the expenditures are 16 million, but the revenues are at 18 million.
Right, the percentage is what I'm?
Yeah, yeah, it's at 35.5.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Are we going to go through the other general fund pages, or, or no? And I don't know if, and Brent, maybe you can help with this question too, like, what I did, which might be irritating or not, I don't know.
No, no.
I looked at?
Ask questions away, ask away.
I just refreshed my memory from our retreat and what everybody said their priorities and needs were, and kind of looked to see if that was reflected in the budget, because I think that was our ask back in December, where it's like, hey, make sure you ask for it, and there's, there's a lot of great symmetry between the two, and then there might be a couple of places where I'm like, hmm, they said new vehicles, and maybe those vehicles are coming from somewhere else.
A lot of the vehicles or the big capital expenditures will be coming out of the 0399, which is the capital enhancement budget. We didn't put it in there, as we put in the capital enhancement, since it's a one-time purchase, yes.
Exactly what I was looking for, thank you. But I don't know if we want to go through, if we want to go through?
I mean, when we hit that budget, we'll go through it in detail and tell you where those expenditures were placed in.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
You got a question regarding the general fund?
Or any of the expenditures, was there any questions on any of those pages at this time?
So on the finance budget accounting?
Yes.
Page, I'm just curious, and I did see this on another one of the general fund budgets, but we'll speak to this one. It says contract other services, it was 109,305 by fiscal year 2023, and then you can see so forth, and, you know, as you go on, it's a 46,000 adjustment? I was just wondering if that, if you remember why?
No, that adjustment is due to, we're trying to transition a lot of our contracts that are regarding IT out of the finance budget into the MIS budget or the IT budget. So that one, that one encompasses some of the money that I am moving over to IT for the tragic maintenance contract. So that way, it comes out of the appropriate budget versus finance.
Makes sense, thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any other one, any other questions?
Yeah, on the, no, Commissioner Romero.
Chair, on the assessors, the health and medical premiums, we have for FY 2023, 285,950, and then it's only 228,981 for '24. Is that, is it going down?
HR is the one that provided those numbers. I feel that some of those numbers are probably because some are not electing, or the county's picking up the cost for those medical insurances. So some of the costs, they go down because not everybody has family coverage, they just have themselves, which the county is picking up, obviously, that bill. So that's possibly why that went down, because they were looking at the ones that probably have full coverage or have them and their spouse, their partner with them, versus just an individual coverage, medical and dental and gynecology coverage.
So you feel that's sufficient to?
Yeah. And if I might, Elsa, on the, on, we were just talking about IT, the full-time positions reflected, is that any new positions? Because just looking at the plan that we need to implement and how much responsibility Colin has, is this, does this reflect any additional positions to try to get that work done, or, and that might be for Brent?
Yes, it does reflect the new positions at the budgeted amount per the, the budgeted amount per the compensation study. Just to go back on something Commissioner Romero said, is, there's some on some of these funds, there is a difference, because what was put into the budget last year may have not been correct, so there could have also been the difference. I know we did have one employee in that department change their coverage, but also, as Ms. Vehil knows, what was the correct numbers, that some of the cases didn't go in correctly into last year's budget.
Thank you for that, and if I could just ask one more question about IT, and you all might not know that, know this, you know, reviewing the document that he provided and this, I'm just wondering when, because Colin has a good plan put together, including budget, and I'm just wondering what, if you know, and you might, again, totally fine if you don't, what the staffing level was that was used to kind of build out his budget? Because, you know, like, the staffing level that we have at the county determines how much equipment, how much cloud storage, how much of, you know, basically how much IT we need, so I'm just wondering if it's like considering full staffing or considering current number of people, and that, the answer can wait till later, but I'm just, it just occurred to me, like, I'm wondering about that and looking through his budget.
I can answer that question, but we'll get an answer for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
The next section I'm going into is detail of transfers. This also still needs a little more work, but for preliminary, at this point, it's more or less correct, I just have to do more on it, just to ensure for final that all the numbers and depending what grant matches and what comes in the door, what we foresee coming in the door is reflected on here. As you can see, under detention facility, again, I'm going to mention again, we moved it up to 2.4 and some change, and under the senior citizens fund, we moved it up to 200,000. On the senior citizens fund, reviewing it with the department head and some staff, I just want to bring to light that the budget, again, was adjusted again by AAA and Metro, and it was slightly reduced again from what they turned in. So it was a fast and furious on Friday and Saturday to try to adjust that here in this budget, in this preliminary budget, due to the changes that were made for operations, as well as, it's my understanding, they are going to give them a little bit more to help with the compensation and the comp plan, but the whole reason why we went from 102,800 to 200,000, to help assist with that comp plan and those increases, because their grants probably will not support those wages or those benefits. The few things I took off of here was the one for the veteran cemetery that reflected 3 million when I originally put it in on the tentative side. I left the grant match at 800,000 right now, in terms of other grants that I foresee coming in that, in the future, that we may be granted here to the legislature, that we may have to do a grant match on, like our LGRF for Blueberry Hill and so forth, comes out of those match funds that we have to match, either the 25%, 10%, or whatever the grant requires. Under the, and I got a lot of this stuff from not just our resolutions that we did this year, but as well as the memo transfers or the cash transfers that I've been doing together, working together with the treasurer on. So you'll notice towards the bottom of the page, it says temporary loans to the, to the general fund, a lot of these were monies that will be transferring back in into the general fund, okay? Those will be updated here for the final, due to I need to sit down more of Ms. Montoya, as we're seeing some more reimbursements hopefully coming in here soon, so we can kind of get a more accurate number. As well as for the back page with some of the permanent transfers of the correction fees and, you know, additional, admin judicial conflicts to the road fund, I pretty much left all those the same, a lot of those are still in effect at this point, so I kind of didn't want to mess with something that's still in play. So I don't know if you have any questions on the detailed transfers?
Any questions, Steve? Thank you, no.
Under correction fees, under the interim budget, we give a projection of $20,000 versus the 45,000 for the new year, so that was a change that occurred there under correction fees from the previous presentation. So you'll notice it balances out to zero at the bottom.
Elsa?
Uh huh.
Chair, can you explain corrections fee fund? What exactly is that, are there, where do we get that money? Where's it coming from?
Well, we get it from the courts, so it's from the administrative office of the courts, so part of what your fee assessment, when you go to the court fees, does come back to us as well, so. And then I have a question that I need to ask DFAs, how much can we support detention center of, it's a small amount. So for example, in the municipalities, they get correction fees also, if they go through municipal court, and they could use that money to pay us on the contracts that we have with the town of Taos and Red River to house, to house individuals.
Okay, okay, thanks, that's good. Good question.
The next budget is the property valuation fund. On there, after speaking with the county assessor and staff, I brought to their attention the one that I had concerns about, which was the contract other services. They misunderstood in terms of why they were subtracting and that, and I told them, well, you're wanting to have these services, but you're taking it away, and they're like, oh, we didn't realize, we did it wrong, so I put it all back at the 882,000. In terms of buildings and structures, they read In terms of buildings and structures, they reduce that by 35,000. And some of the capital purchases that they will be taking out of the 1% fund, obviously, is for some upgrades of the computer systems that they need, as well as for some other trainings to IIO, IAO? I, I never get those acronyms right. That is, yeah, that is so, oh, yeah. And, and some other areas there where they're, they're needing to replace some of the chairs and so forth. It has been quite a while since we moved it to this building, so they're starting to give out, obviously, you know. So it, it does impact the assessors in, in one way or another. They all kind of co-mingle between the GIS and the appraisers and stuff. So it, it affects everyone in their one shape or another. So this is kind of what they have in place. I, under revenues, I did put in a little more, but again, I will sit down again with the county treasurer when I'm doing final to ensure whether or not there is an ending cash balance. When we turn in final, all ending cash balances should be zero. So there might be something here in preliminary here that maybe I didn't catch or I didn't put in correctly. This is why you're seeing some type of ending cash balance unless there is a little bit of excess cash that I'm unaware of or revenue coming in. So this is more or less just, like I say, a prediction at this point for preliminary, but there is some fine tuning I need to do in final with every department.
And Chair and Ms. Veal, that is, once again, the 1%. This is 1% and obviously 1% of all property taxes collected. So based on what their collection, this will.
And it's based on their collection and what actually does come in. And we won't, you know, we're kind of predicting an amount, but does it mean that may or may not come in? Um, under the public works fund, we did balance that out. As you can see, for interim budget, it came out to zero. There are some about ending cash balances in our current budget. Again, like Mr. Harameo said, there were some errors made in this current budget, which I'm still trying to correct before fourth quarter comes around to make sure our budget's balanced to where they should be. But as you can see, I did have to reduce a little bit on grounds and roadways due to the amount of restricted cash and revenues that are, are projected to come in. So I had to reduce it by a little less than 5,000 in order to balance out. They had put in a little more only because, you know, the, the materials, especially to fix potholes or even to do roadways have gone up from culverts, you name it. Everything's just going up in price. It's, it's, uh, it's getting very expensive to repair roadways right now. So I don't know if there's any questions there.
Yeah. Commissioner Beal.
Yes. So on the upper part of the public works fund, it says on under department, no department. Why, why does it say that?
Oh, it says no department.
Yeah, it's kind of separate from the bottom.
Beginning, beginning cash and revenues, there's no department assigned, just the actual fund. So those are all your revenues and cash in terms of LGBMS. Anything that has like the 501 county roads, those are all considered your expenditures. So that's how it's broken down, DFAs, that we know what's revenue and restricted cash and what is actual expenditures.
Okay.
Okay?
And, and each page.
Yeah, I know, it's a little confusing because it's like, why do they have no department?
This is one, this is one place that it matched up nicely to what we heard in the retreat, because what we heard was the key pieces of equipment and tools were necessary. And then I saw the increase here, which reflected nicely what everyone said we needed. So.
Yes. And of course, some of those vehicles are also, you know, for road department are also reflected in the 399.
And then I have another question where it says contribution and donations. Is that a actual donation?
As a March, that was an actual amount of the 45 240. What was that for? I remember that one. It just slipped my mind what that amount was for. And it was, it had to, it came in.
It's okay if you don't remember.
I can't remember, but I do recall that amount coming in for a purpose for the road department. Yeah, I just can't remember what it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, since roads are always a hot topic?
Well, I have one more. There's transfers in 500,000. Is, is that because there was a shortage of some kind or?
That's a transfer that we do in from the general fund. It's in the, in the listing of the transfers that we, the detailed transfers that we do provide, uh, public works to help assist with operations.
We don't bring in enough revenue from the grocery receipts tax and MVD fees to operate it without money from the general fund.
Okay. So our, our funds, meaning like each district is all in here, correct? As a, as a whole? It's in here? I think someone spoke about, was it Jason that said 200,000 for each? No, or I don't?
That's in the 399.
399. Okay.
To, to your, of course, uh.
Because this is expenditures. I'm sorry. This is expenditures. Oh, no, revenue and expenditures.
Under manager, our Chalata, talking about expenditures, there was never, whatever we got from local government road fund or this, in this case, it's 337,000. Now that we buy material, that was basically the amount that I was put back into roads. So under manager, our Chalata, we started using some of the 399 to do more road maintenance, road construction. So it's only been a recent thing that we started using 399 to help build up and maintain the roads. Prior to that, it was just this little bit amount, and that was basically pothole repair. And Nelson remembers this from her time working there. So it's only a recent thing that we started doing, uh, road construction and road maintenance.
Okay. So just, just clarification. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand. So the funds that are in there for each district is not, it's not.
It, it's not listed under the public works budget. It'll be listed under the capital enhancement budget.
Got it. Okay. Just so I know where it's at.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the next budget is your state EMS fund, which is the 206 that obviously comes from the fire excise taxes to be utilized through, um, different departments who provide services through the ambulance, including your fire district, your volunteer fire districts. This one did balance out to zero. Working together with fire, I made sure that we got that done. Um, the enhanced E911 fund, this one still shows an ending cash balance of 1.8. Kind of, under the grocery receipts tax, we kind of predicted 1.9 in the new year, but I'm not sure, but I know this fund hasn't been spent down a lot. I know this year we, we do, we did get some approval, obviously, for some services, which is reflected under, um, under the maintenance and repair contracts, which brought it up to 214,000 this year for the server room and, and, you know, the upkeep in that area. I'm not sure. I need to work again together with the director and obviously with the county manager and possibly talk further with the finance committee and the JPA board on where else some of those expenditures can go at this point to help assist with that.
And is that, Elsa, I just want to make sure that, that you mentioned the servers, and I know that there are systems upgraded that are needed. I just wanted to make sure that this is covering the equipment and technology and upgrades that we need.
And there, and there is a possibility they may have to upgrade some of the equipment soon. So that's why I say some of these expenses from that money, I need to talk further to see what we're projecting for the new year, if any of the radios are any need to be replaced in dispatch. I know they've been there a while, and I know there is upkeep and, and updates on them, but eventually, you know, they become antiquated as well. So it, and they are very expensive. So if we can, we do have the funds to replace that we should, just to keep the center up and running.
Right. Absolutely.
Especially after this weekend, it's, I'm pretty sure they got slammed. So I was thinking of them very much this weekend.
Yes.
And all the officers and all the EMS out there. The next was your farm and range fund. As you can see on, on the interim budget, we did balance to zero. We are projecting the 17 448 for this. So as you can see, that, that one is pretty much set for the year. The fire protection fund is the 209. This one also balanced out to zero with the different expenditures. And you'll notice under equipment and machinery, they still have a large amount due to they're doing all those water tanks and those monies are carrying over in those different districts, as well as some building and structures where they're doing improvements to their fire districts. Some of them are, are carrying over a lot of the amount, saving over for the ones that need to build a new fire station. So you'll kind of see that amount grow little by little every year until they have enough funds to actually put it out to construction once they get what they need in place with engineering. The law enforcement protection fund, after speaking with the sheriff and undersheriff, we did receive the LEPF award letter, and right now, um, the temporary or the improvement of it was 135 500. So as you can see, after speaking with them, they wanted to put in 125,000 to help with the purchase of units or vehicles for their fleet, as well as moving 5,000 into employee training and 5,500 into supplies for non-cap, for any other supplies that they are needing to purchase out of the LEPF. There is very little to none left for them to revert back this year. This is why they didn't put in a waiver to carry over any balances for the LEPF. They did expend it. So there's a very, very small, minuscule amount that's going to be heading back to the state for that fund. Lodger's tax, we're closely with Mr. Madrid on this. And after doing the numbers as well as looking at the different revenues, we're still showing a little bit, about a little over half a million. I don't know if he's in here or not. Half a million dollars. I need to work with him on that to ensure that whatever we're projecting is correct in order for us to place those monies in the correct line item and the expenditures to make sure we're moving forward with what we need to do under these two funds.
Question. So, and I want to say that I asked this the last time. I just don't remember the answer. So I was noticing on the lodger's tax promotional fund, there's 300,000 pledged for air transportation. Remind me why it says 300,000 when it should only say 150? What's?
If I would have caught this last week, you wouldn't see that 300,000, because this, this is.
Third quarter.
This was third quarter, but this was also when Antonio wrote the budget last year, his way of note keeping on this sheet. And then he'd followed what Lupe done in prior years, because Lupe would, would, would say where, where that number was going to go, because that comes out of the 1.1 million. So that's where, uh, I had text Elsa this morning that we should delete that.
That, that 300,000 is actually what we expended this last or this current fiscal year for the last agreement, but it wasn't something that the commission approved for this new fiscal year. Obviously, only the summer portion, which was 150,000. But this actually came off the third quarter. I'm sorry, I didn't take it off. But yeah, he, he did warn me about that one. Yes, please. Thank you. We usually provide those in the quarterly reports and stuff, so, you know.
You could tell we're paying attention, huh?
Yeah. Well, that's good. I'm glad you guys went through the whole budget. But, but that's okay. I mean, that's what we're here for today.
It's just that it hasn't been approved. So one last question there.
Sure.
So the salaries, the temporary position, is that, what, what, what position are we referring to?
We, we had, I, I never understood that, where we had a temporary position in there before, but right now, after talking with Mr. Madrid, that's position is not going to happen.
It's going away. So we did have a, a temporary person that helped us for a couple of months. And so this fund was further divided into the recreation fund. So we had a recreation fund that would do park maintenance at Philimon Sanchez. So that's where that positions were. There was two or two to four positions that were previously in there. There were 10 positions. So that's, that's going away. Yeah.
Yeah, the 2024, there's a negative. I mean, there's a.
Yeah. Yeah. That's why there's negatives there, because we took, we removed all those back out.
Okay.
Which is possibly why we have a little bit of overage in the bottom. So, yeah. So like I say, I'll have to work a little more with Mr. Madrid closely on that and, and see what we're going to do there. Under the intergovernmental grants fund, this is one of the most difficult ones. It stresses me out so much. It's all our grants, but it also incorporates our senior companion program and our foster grandparent program under this particular fund. So it's kind of all jumbled together. So you got to kind of look at all the grants and then work together with the senior program to get the, that other money in that comes in, that Shona Maris Bond manages next door. So we were able to balance this out completely. It was interesting because I had to keep remembering which projects were out there and go back into there and say, hey, oh, no, we still have, we're still in construction in progress. Put this back in. So I was wondering why my numbers were off, and it's because I wasn't putting the money back in for some of these projects that are still ongoing. So, I mean, this encompasses all the way down to TCE, DC in there and everything. So as you can see, some of these numbers are pretty high in there for that reason. I don't know if there was any questions there. It just, there's just so much on that one that just, it blows my mind sometimes looking at it. It's just like, wow, can't believe how much we are, been awarded and getting moving and out the door. So.
Right.
It's, it's a lot of money. The senior citizens fund, this one incorporates our congregant, our homemaker, and our transportation fund, as well as ARPA funds that are received on the side where we do the, the meals that go to the senior citizens at home, as well as when they come and eat here at the centers. This one, this is the one where I originally had a balance, but then they started reducing a lot of the operations, which kind of threw my numbers off. Again, this was one of the budgets that was really off this year. So that's possibly why I'm, I'm having a hard time trying to get this balanced due to the fact that it wasn't budgeted correctly for the final budget at the beginning of the year, since there was just all kinds of issues. But right now, I'm trying to get this to a point where the final 2023 budget does balance out to what the state approved for them for this year. So hopefully, the interim budget will fall into place when I do it for final.
Right. And check, if I may. So, and I know Jason really worked hard on this. Thank you, Jason. I know you were instrumental in trying to get this all figured out as well as Elsa. But noticed on the temporary positions, i- is that just, is that accurate? It was 202, 272, and then now we're only, actually, it's.
It, it is, only because some of the rates did change dramatically within that department. They were paying really, really low wages. And now everything's being brought, brought up to par.
Remember, part of the grant is for, for employees that only can work four, four hours a day. Another set of employees works for six hours a day. Those are SEP workers. And so we have quite a few of them, so that's where that temporary position comes from.
Glad to see that it's going up.
Yes. And just under the, just the SEP program, that's about 45,000 just right off the bat for those individuals that are temporary. The next fund I have in place is the healthcare assistance fund. Again, the numbers below in the colored areas are third quarter, just to let you know. We worked together very closely with Zach on this, and we were able to get it at a balanced budget for the interim for 2024.
The other thing that will be different for a final budget in this is we're in a, and I don't have the final number yet, but we're going to deposit the opioid monies into this fund. And then, and then we can work, uh, in general, getting the, those monies back out during the final budget, so.
So, if I may, Chair. I, I was reading the instructions. So opioid money doesn't have to be in a separate fund, obviously, like the American Rescue and LA.
No, it doesn't. It's, it's a settlement money, so.
So it can go into that.
It can go into.
I was trying to remember what.
Yeah, it can go into H cap right now. And then at that point, that's, they are going to work out on how they're going to utilize those monies out in the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramau.
Yeah. On the opioid settlement funds, when do you anticipate that that will come in?
We, we already started, we, we started receiving some. We have, what, 289,000?
Around there.
So, so one of the two June meetings, we will do a budget adjustment to account for that. And then I need to find the number so we can put in for the budget. So we have, like I said, 289,000 already here.
Yeah. Okay. The next fund is your county hospital fund. After verifying their, on. The next fund is your county hospital fund. After verifying there, and I did indicate this last time, under interim budget, there's no more money at this point through the old GRT. It's all been expended. So that's why that's at zero. Fire excise tax fund is the two two two, which is the, the third fund through the fire excise tax. And this one also did balance out to zero, which has in hand in hand with the two oh nine, that's how they're working together to, with these two funds to make some of those projects happen with those water tanks and building improvements as well as supplies and more bunker gear and SBA's and so forth. Besides several other grants that they received this year that they're also purchasing for several other volunteer fire departments.
Madam Chair, I had the question back on the, on the county hospital fund. Isn't your mill levy money still coming in or is that not the case?
Yes, we do have one more year of mill levy money. It's further down on some pages where the Treasury Office shows out all the monies that go out. We'll call that out when we get to that page.
Okay.
Thank you. The DWI fund, they also had to complete their final budget early in the year with the state. And this was all placed in appropriately. And of course, this zeroed out based on the funds that they do project in getting in the door for the new year for that particular grant fund. Of course, that one's always changing, just depending on what reversions happen mid-year. And then when they reapply, whether or not they're going to get some of those reversions back. So that budget's always up and down, up and down when it comes to the balance. The clerk, go ahead.
Fire access tax fund. The, okay, this is the GRT that the voters voted on, right? Is in here.
Uh, no, no. This one's strictly from the state fire marshal that they applied for. No, that one you're talking about actually applies towards the EMS applies side. Yes. Okay. And on that world, yeah.
And this tax that you're seeing here is just count, it's
Volunteer fire.
It goes for the volunteer fire departments, but it doesn't go, it's not, it's not implemented within the municipality. So it's only a countywide tax.
Yes. Okay. So the, the GRTs that I'm referring to is in a different section in here.
It's good. Eventually it's going to go. We're discussing with the treasurer exactly which funds to put them in.
Okay.
And we're expecting eight hundred and eighty thousand of GRT though. It helps support the salary. So we're debating if we should create another fund for final, for the new budget for just salaries or we should put it into the EMS.
And then some still needs to go over to the, the town, is that correct?
Correct. To all three municipalities.
All three municipalities. Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
All four.
Four. Okay, right, right, right. Okay.
The next fund is your DWI fund. Of course, it did balance to zero based on the funds that they do project coming in the door. The next one is the two two five, which is the clerk recording and filing fee fund. Again, we left it flat, but I, I need to meet with Madam Clerk and, and her deputy in terms of the ending cash balance. Since they did leave the amounts flat, I think we need to look at that again to see where some of those expenditures may need to occur at this point in time or vice versa. Whether or not those type of revenues are going to come in or if they're going to come in higher or lower in the new year. So that's, that's another discussion for another day, of course, with the county clerk. Detention fund. This one too, we worked very hard on this one with Jason and Brent. This one's a very difficult fund due to it does take a lot of cash and money to run. So we were able to work out and under care prisoners, as you noticed, it went up to one point five due to the contracts for Core Health and Summit as well as additional costs. The, the care prisoners also includes when we do have to send a detainee inmate out to a different facility, whether it's to get services or to hold them there for whatever reason versus here in our detention center. So it, it does reflect that amount in there as well. That was one of the biggest changes. Of course, their salaries too did go up significantly as you can see on there. That one was a, a little tricky in terms of the full-time and temporary because temporary positions came into play this year and they have maybe two individuals who do temporary right now. And those are, those individuals are, you know, were already previous employees, but decided to go temporary instead of staying full-time. So they still come back in to assist with minimal to no training since they're fully aware of all the procedures in the jail at this point in time.
Thank you. Commissioner Beal, did you have a question? I was just thinking about the ask from New Mexico counties and trying to get the data necessary as, as far as I think Brent, I sent it over to you, transfers and, and the monies that are being spent. Do you recall?
No, I recall no. I need to double check my email, but I think undersheriff Hoegriff responded and got New Mexico counties that.
Right, because there could be some additional monies to Taos County. And I know they're trying to pass some legislation to get compensated. So, okay.
Yeah, just agree. Thank you. And just on this one, I know that back at the retreat, a couple of things stood out that, that were talked about as being needed. One train was staff training, which is reflected here, an increase in training. And also like various equipment and technology needs, which we've been seeing come before us, like the, the monitors and so on. Are other equipment and technology needs reflected in this budget page? Just again, want to make sure these critical areas have, have the tools that they need.
Some of this technology we're taking to the LACTF fund. So which is the scanner for the cells, the, the heart monitor, the R I D, whatever it's called. So we actually, we tested one out last week. The one with the technology we're waiting for is still going to be a little while. We're looking, exploring some other technology. And so we're trying to get their technology needs accounted for. And the LACTF funds, any building maintenance, it's going to come out of the one oh three fund.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions about this, this fund? Thank you.
Okay. The next one is the county education GRT. I do ask that, I just left it as is. After, there's several funds in here. After speaking with the, the county treasurer, these are all going to be reflective of the true amounts towards the final. So they do need to be tweaked. Right now I just based it on what we had in there. Only because it's, it's a little tricky, these ones and the, the bond ones are. After reviewing what needs to get turned in for preliminary, I got to make sure and ensure that those funds still are in place when we submitted in for preliminary. So I will discuss it further or meet with the county treasurer and deputy county treasurer on those funds. The convention center fund is our community center fee fund. And as you can see, that balanced out. The restricted cash is five thousand four sixty-two. And that's what we're projecting for the new year. So right now it's strictly just put under maintenance repairs for the building and structures at this time in terms of what we collect under those fees. The Title III Forest Reserve Fund. This one right now, the restricted cash is thirty-five nine thirty-four. I'm not sure, and I need to double check on this. And this is where I did balance it out, but I need to ensure whether or not we are going to be predict we are going to see if there is going to be a thirty thousand dollar revenue coming in the door from usually it comes in through this grant. So I didn't put it in there because I was not sure if we have, I think we did apply for it, but I'm not sure how much was granted back in yet. So that's why I didn't really put an amount. I should have put thirty thousand, but just to let you know, I may just put that thirty thousand back under the reserve, the, the revenue line item to show that that's possibly a revenue that we are going to foresee coming in for Title III, which is for our WUI coordinator contract that we have in place. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, this one did bounce out based on the presentation that was given to you by Mr. Madrid. I don't know if there was any questions on this one at this time, if any, you know, I'll give off to Mr. Harmio.
I, I do. Thank you. So first question is, I was trying to figure out and, and my apologies if you mentioned it Brent and I just don't recall. But under maintenance and repairs ground roadways, that one is actually going to one point five million. Can you, I don't remember the reason. Because I, I know I have your report here, but this is for the second tranche. Now this American Rescue Plan does include both tranches, correct?
Yes, there's a carryover.
The restricted cash is the carryover is six eighty-six forty-eight from the first tranche. And the second tranche is the three million one seventy-eight thirty.
Okay.
So there is a little bit of carryover from the first tranche that was not expended.
And while you're looking at that, we did modify for those two areas that we did give some money out from the first tranche, which was the, the educational, the, I'm sorry, summer program?
Yep, the summer program with task behavioral health and, and inspire. And the second was with the courts for the domestic violence court. That second one was fifty thousand.
I'm sure it's a good reason. I was just trying to remember why we had moved some money.
Just to give us the ability to take care of ourselves.
Okay.
To take care of our needs.
Nothing specific. Okay, makes sense. And then, would that be the same for the contract, other services?
Yes, and there's still money for housing in here. We still have a million dollars for housing. We have ability to put back out to, for economic impact, five hundred thousand. Private sector capacity, another five hundred thousand. And then if we need to take care of ourselves internally for employees, we set aside money for that. And then we have the one more, one point two to take, take care of the county's infrastructure needs.
So what does the housing go into? Just, I, I know there's not a category housing, but is it just in the in the contracts or where does it?
Well, it could be, it's set aside to work with the Taos Housing Partnership tomorrow. Ms. O'Brien, myself, Mr. Caldwell and Andrew Gonzalez are going to meet on how to come up with the mechanism and start transferring over some of the monies to the town of Taos to cover Ms. O'Brien's salary and to cover some of her supplies that she needs to get started.
Thank you.
So that conversation will take place tomorrow. I don't know if there'll be any budgeted transfers prior to June thirtieth, or this won't wait till July one. That'll be, I assume that would be part of the conversation tomorrow.
Thank you. That's great to know that that meeting is happening. But was your question where on this page it shows up?
Yes, exactly. That is my question.
Is it potentially other services, contract other services?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yes.
It would show up there.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And could I ask, you know, this has always been really an interesting area for us for the last two and a half years. But could I ask just a more general question? I think this is more for you, Mr. Harmio. If you, if you know what's happening in Washington right now with the debt ceiling negotiations and the fact that some clawbacks for unobligated ARPA funds are on it are part of the deal. The deal is not voted on yet by Congress, but could you, if you can, explain to us why ours are potentially not? Because I know there are different categories of ARPA. And perhaps like local government, county and municipalities, like those aren't the ones that are potentially on the table as part of the deal. But I would just sleep better if I could understand that for sure that our unobligated funds are still safe.
So I'll, I'll forward this to the commission after. This is from Erin Hurley from NACO. The definition of obligation is a definite commitment that creates a legal liability of the government for the payment of goods or services ordered or received or a legal duty on the part of the United States that could mature into a legal liability by virtue of actions on the part of the other party beyond the control of the United States. Payments made immediately or in the future. An agency incurs an obligation, for example, when it places an order, signs a contract, awards a grant, purchases a service or takes other actions that require a government to make payments to the public and or form to the public or in the form of one government account to another. Treasury states that a hundred percent of the funds have been obligated. Let me know if you have any additional questions. So it's kind of a broad definition of obli- of what's obligated, but saying that we have a million dollars to Taos Housing Partnership, in my mind, obligates. That's one obligation there. Where it's a little bit more loose is to your point on the money for maintenance contracts. Yeah, that's a little bit more loose because it hasn't all been fully obligated.
But, and thank you Brent, that, that definition is helpful, but it doesn't make me feel like, I mean, because you were there were words in there about like making a definite commitment and that something that's basically like a legal obligation that someone could come after us for if we didn't honor. But as far as I understand, we don't have, we have a presentation like this for tranche two, which is awesome, but that's not, to me, that doesn't constitute anything like illegal commitment.
If I may?
I might be wrong, but I just want to make sure that our, our funds are safe.
And I, and I would agree with you that, I mean, if we if, and I'm not saying this is, is the fact. I'm just saying if you told me Brent spent three point eight million dollars on, well, take a million back. Two point eight on Blueberry Hill, that I think that's an obligation.
I think that's, that's where my question is, is leading is like, do we need to make decisions like that in order to preserve and protect these funds for Taos County? You know, and I was thinking in the middle of the night, like the, the IT, the MIS investment that we're going to make, which is again, super smart to put a million or so funds, but I know we were doing that from the LACTF. Should we instead do that from, from ARPA to get those funds out the door? But even then, we don't have any kind of actual contract or, you know. What, I guess what constitutes a definite commitment slash legal obligation for any of these?
Chair, I don't, I don't think anyone really knows the answer to that. I have been following and attending the AG and Rule Affairs and the Farm Bill meetings that take place once a month. And we do get a lot of information from Owen Hart, I think is his last name. And I forward that over to Brent and and when I know that something could happen. And I know the clawback was one of the conversations, but the last meeting that we had, my understanding that it was a known negotiator, that there was not going to be a clawback, but that doesn't make me feel better until we know for sure. But apparently, and then I did call Heimrich's office to make sure that they would stop that if it was going to happen. But what I've been told is that there is not going to be a clawback. But once again, I wouldn't, yeah, well, none of us.
It's not tied to the debt ceiling.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Exactly. So I don't know that we really know the answer to that. I mean, we don't know yet. You're right. I don't think they know. And I, I get what you're saying. Do we secure it? The, the thing is that we would have to definitely get together and figure out, you know, where, where do we want to put it, you know? Because once we allocate it, it, it's hard to pull it from there. I don't know.
Try to find another document.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah, where do we put it?
So this, we didn't say debt. Local leaders do not have to rush to obligate. Stating local fiscal recovery funds are not at risk. Local leaders do not have to rush to obligate funds, any SLRF funds, which is this is, even if they've not been spent are safe based on NLC discussions with the Treasury Department and congressional staffers as well as the Office of the Management of Budget Documents and the Congressional Budget, Budget Office Analysis. Negotiators are considering rescinding ARPA funds that have not been committed, obligated in policy terms by multiple federal agencies, including the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. Agency FEMA, Federal Communications Committee, since the Treasury Department has already sent all the, the ARPA funds, since all the, since the Treasury Department has already sent all the ARPA funds to local governments, those funds are considered obligated for federal budget purposes, as well as for purposes of the negotiations, even if they've not been spent by your local government."
Perfect, that's exactly what I was asking, like, this is, because there are all kinds of ARPA funds, right? The stuff that went to FEMA, the SLRF, state and local recovery funds, and that is the answer that we're looking for. If you could forward the link to where, is that Municipal League or?
Yeah, National League of Cities.
Okay, if you could forward that to us, just so that we have it in our back pocket, because that's exactly, thank you, that's exactly the answer I was hoping to hear. Great. I'm done, thank you.
Little bit of relief there. Yeah. The next fund is your 299, which is the Treasurer Special Revenue Fund. Of course, that one balanced out. It pretty much stayed flat, is how she selected at this point. In terms of the Sheriff's Special Revenue Fund under the 299, after further discussions, the restricted cash amount changed due to some funding that came in from the Village of Questa. So right now, the interim budget in terms of restricted cash is 26209. And as you notice, under salaries and overtime, that was increased to 170,000. Supplies went up to 32809. Operating costs, which is safety equipment, stayed at 10, and vehicles went down to 50,000 to balance out this budget for the 298. So hopefully, this will help supplement some of the overtime that they have been experiencing at the Sheriff's Office. Looks like they're hopefully retaining more staff and hopefully stick around. So they're almost fully staffed, exactly, and hopefully everybody sticks around and keeps going with how crazy this world is right now. Under the Community Development Block Grant, which is the 302, as you can see, that one balanced out as well. I had to go back in and look at the different expenditures and to see what contracts were still out there. This one affects our old county courthouse and as well as the new CDBG coming in for detox. Under the 303, which is our state legislative appropriate funds, these are different funds under the legislative appropriation projects. And as you can see, this one also balanced out with the cash and revenue with the expenditures. Under the 399, and I will hand this off to our county manager, Mr. Harameo, this is the Capital Projects Fund. As you notice, under vehicles alone, it increased significantly, so there's about 250,000 of that, just to bring to light, that the sheriff did ask for, that's in there. We also included 25,000 under equipment and machinery for the sheriff as well, for computers that are badly needed and updated at the sheriff's office. Vehicles for public works are also listed on there. Who else is getting vehicles? Oh, possibly planning, about two vehicles that they are necessarily needing, and maybe some more for our own fleet to replace. But there's other, other areas that I'll let Mr. Harameo talk about.
This, what you're saying here, the Capital Project Funds is a combination of two funds, which makes it confusing on its own right, which is the 103 Fund and the 399 Fund. And the 398, so total three funds going to here, which made it crazy to balance next week.
I just wanted to let you know, I didn't see where the page break went, and as you notice, the ending cash balance appears on the GRT revenue bond side. You'll see it's zeroed out, but it moved, I will fix that, I just noticed that now.
So the 103 Fund does consist of grocery receipts tax that comes in. It's my understanding that that tax was imposed to help build the complex. There is a grocery receipts intercept that goes out to pay for some of that debt for the complex, and that's about, I think we put in here 94,000 or 86,000 that's going to go out. This, the 103 Fund has generally been used for maintenance here at the complex. This is a, in a fund that could be better used on the 103 side, that should take care of our stucco, take care of the grounds, the sidewalks. So there is plenty of money for there, for that. And then so we've also setting aside money for 850,000 out of the 1.3 million here, is coming from the 399 Fund, and that will go for community centers and senior center repairs. We have 3.8 that we want to take to, for roadways. There's still some cash balance off the 3.8 that is for Awas Kalenta Bridge, and there is some parking lot improvements, that's part of the 3.8. We want to spend $1 million in new monies from the PILP Fund to go, to make up that 3.8, to also to put back into roads. So we have about 2.7 million that we're carrying, 2.7 from the past that we're carrying forward to go out and for roadways, and then we're adding another million dollars to that. And we've been carrying these balances. Jason has been working with Mr. Fernandez and Ms. Chavez on getting GM emulsions under a state price agreement, those contracts are, I think, sitting on Elsa's desk, waiting when she gets back the procurement side, so that way we can start doing some chip seals and some other road improvements. I don't know if you want to add to that, Jason, or no? So we're working with the four men in each of the areas to, to get that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions under this fund?
Nope, thank you.
Under the 402 and 403, I just left it in as is for now. These also will be updated for the final, working together with the Treasurer's Office. So those two, right now, are still at zero, I just left as is. We're going to move on to the 502, which is the Solid Waste Fund. And as you notice, this one as well, balanced out to zero. This is an enterprise fund, so they bring in the money. This also includes solid waste administration included in this area here, which also includes their wages in there, under the full-time positions, which, right now, yay, we're fully staffed at the moment upstairs, so it's a lot less stress on Melissia and myself, trying to keep up, especially now that the busy season's coming around the corner again, more billing. And then the next one will be the 505, which is the TAOAS EMS Ambulance Fund.
Elsa, could I just ask a solid waste fund question?
Sure.
And this is sort of like future looking, and maybe we haven't decided yet, but I know that out of the LATCF funds, we've set aside funds to set up a recycling program. Will then that be, you know, as we set that up as something recurring, will that be reflected in the future in the solid waste fund in terms of positions and revenue? Because the LATCF is a one-time, like, do the study, get the program up and going, right? But it has to be a recurring expense for people and program?
We didn't discuss this with the Treasurer last week, and there's been no final decision if we're going to separate out recycling, or, or there would be a recycling fund, but as far as separating out of employees, there's been no final decision on that.
Thank you, I'm glad to know it's on the, on the radar and being discussed, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
The Treasurer's recommendation was to use, what I said was going to go away, the Recreation Fund, use that fund number to, for this.
And as you notice, that, which is the 217, isn't listed on here for that reason, because obviously the Philly Moncentus Park is moving on, so we didn't put that fund in this year, but that number I would assume is still available, but that's something that's being looked into for recycling.
Thank you. Vice Chair, are you got a question?
Yeah, on the solid waste fund, does it typically have to be subsidized, or does it almost carry itself?
It's an enterprise fund, so they, whatever revenues or taxes that are generated, it pretty much stands on its own, is what it does. Yes, it generates its own funds to sustain its own department. EMS also does the same as well. So it depends on collections that upstairs get for all the fees and so forth, that also goes into this fund to, to generate revenue for solid waste.
Commissioner Beal?
I was going to say, correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, but in the past, it took some work to get to this point, right? Because it, at some point, we, I think the county did in fact transfer in? Or has it always stood up on its own? I just know they've done a lot of work to get it to this.
Yes, the county used to transfer money in, I think that ceased, when it went up to the $120 an hour. Melissia's.
120 hours a year.
$120 a year. Melissia's worked hard on bringing down the collection rate, so it is standing up on its, on its own. Even when we're trying to budget this, we were trying to plug things within the items to make it balance out to zero, because we had excess money when we were sat down with Edward.
Very good. Okay, thank you, I just remembered that. Got to point it out, it's really good.
Mr. Silva, did you want to add something?
Thank you.
I just want to bring up that currently this fund, our collection rates float around 50%, knowing that the rate studies, we could generate additional funding or revenue to support this, this department. This is kind of like what I've understood through other individuals in other municipalities or government, when the rate study comes through, and we start supporting a recycling fund, somebody says, for every 10 people that wants recycling, there's going to be 20 that don't. I'm not trying to scare anybody from this, I'm just, what I'm getting at is, at this point, there's, has been studies showing that there's a reduction, this came from the individual as well, the revenue comes from 50% to 30%, because somebody says, I'm not going to pay for recycling. The key to this is, is more of education within the classroom that can support parents and understanding the value of recycling, that at the end of the day, anything we keep out of the landfill extends the taxpayer dollars to shore up a, the cell. But then there's some other evidence shows that that kind of is a wash. So there's a lot that kind of goes into this, but just to let everybody know from year to year, if you see something that may have a decrease, it's probably due to the fact, once this rate study is completed, and we have an additional tax for, for recycling, we could receive, it could be in, we'll, we'll see what our community looks like. Our community may jump on board, and we may have 60%, we have an uptick in funding, but we could have a decrease as well. So from year to year, I just, see what happens in a year from now, and what we see are two years, it's probably going to be over two years span. So, I don't know, anybody have questions?
Thank you.
Yes, just wondering about, is there any equipment in here that we've been talking about or have mentioned in the past in regards to weighing? And, you know, there's, there's equipment that, that each area lacks to really know?
At this point, no. There's, as far as, we can purchase something, but at this point, the Director, at this point, has not pushed anything forward. So, so, so that's, he's talked about it, and he's talked to each of you that he needs this, but essentially, his initiative needs to be pushed forward to see how he wants to see this pulled off. There is an identified factor that we're going to have to redesign the current transfer stations, because to not create a roadblock, especially like I'm thinking of Pilat, having one entrance in, that's going to get on the scale, and then one which is out, so you can get their, the tear weight, and then, you know, what the capacity of what they're carrying. So then you can identify that. There's going to have to be reorganization, it's not as easy as just getting scales on there. We're going to have to change the dynamics, how we enter a facility, and how we exit the facility, and how we're going to pass that on to the consumer. The current mechanism of $120, this rate study will define what would be the best way to kind of move this on. But currently, if we do have scales on the site, does that mean we're going to collect at the, at the transfer station?
Right.
I don't know if that's the best issue of having collection of funds and transfers and people making deposits. I, I still think the punch card's probably the way to go, so does it make sense to have scales? I don't know quite as yet. It, it depends if we're willing to collect at the facility, but that means additional staff, because you have accounting staff and so forth. But that would be an item of discussion for a work study session with the Director.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next fund would be the 505, or what we know as the 509, and hard budget, and as for the EMS Ambulance Fund. And again, this one too, I didn't realize the page break threw it into the next page, but it did have an ending cash balance of zero for the interim budget, working together with them on the salaries and the maintenance and so forth. They do tap into the 0206, which is some of the fire excise tax funds. They do get a little there to help with the maintenance and so forth on, on, on their budgets. This one's another enterprise fund that they do collections to sustain their department and keep, keep it going, excuse me. Of course, it was brought up again about the tax, which, again, we're still trying to debate where it's going to go, but it is going to impact, obviously, this department and fire. And then last but least is the 703, which is the grocery receipts tax held for others. Again, I just left it the way it was before, due to we need to show that we're continuing on with this fund. I'll be working together again with the County Treasurer to ensure the numbers are accurate for final. I don't know, did you want to talk to them about that one? Oh, yes, this is where the taxes from the hospital do come in. So this is kind of the fund where they're held at the moment. So you'll see, let's see, where are they? The fire excise tax one, the second one? No? It's in here somewhere. But again, like I say, the numbers are just, it might be the first, I do think it's the first one, the county local option general. I think that's where those funds will be placed in.
The hospital?
The current hospital.
The current hospital.
Is there?
Yeah, got it, thank you.
Otherwise, I stand for any other questions you have on preliminary budget. Again, I do appreciate you guys having a little bit of faith in me and getting this done. This is a lot of work, it's a group effort, and I want to thank all of Administration, including Mr. Harameo, Mr. Silva, and Mr. Madrid for all their help and assistance in helping me get this together, as well as our Treasurer and deputy county treasurer, who assisted in a lot of areas, and HR, and of course, my finance and purchasing staff having patience with me, you know, closing my door in the middle of the crazy world today. This is just a crazy time of year, and a lot needs to be attended to, but at the same time too, they had so much patience and assisted me with whatever they could to get this done, so.
Chair, if I may say something?
Sure, Commissioner Beal.
I just wanted to say, I know that, while we were enjoying our memorial, you all were, or on Saturday anyways, you guys were in here working, so thank you very much. I really felt for you all, you know? But it also shows how committed you are in, in getting the work done. So I just wanted to say a special thank you to all those that, you know, worked to get this done.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Nicely said, and I'll just simply echo the thanks. We know that this took a lot from you and from everybody, all of the department meetings, all of what management helped out with and Administration, and so thank you for, it feels like we're in a solid preliminary report place, and appreciate that a lot. Were there any further?
Also, I'd like to say thank you for the extra hours, extra effort on part of all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
It's, we still, the due date is June 1st, so we'll go through, continue to go through it today, tomorrow. We'll ask him for the Treasurer to see, catch anything. I think it's pretty solid, there's still a lot of work that needs to go in for final, we need to finish for the final for LATTF, final budget we need to do, oblige the opioid monies, or fund the, put that into the budget. budget. So there does, so the final budget, there will be some changes. As we indicated earlier, we did account for the compensation study in these numbers. On June 6th, we will have a resolution asking the Commission to adopt the compensation plan. We do not have the final one from REDW. We should have that by the end of the week. We have the, we've been working with them on the numbers, but to have the pretty book back, or we don't have that document from them. We debated to have it on this agenda versus the 6th, and we thought it's better to get the final product back that incorporates the changes from the department heads, countywide elected officials as well. So we'll be working on the resolution this week and have it for adoption next week. And the goal is to have it implemented for June 24th pay period. So effectively, everybody would see that increase on the first paycheck in July, if you guys approve it next week.
Thank you. That's an exciting update. I know we've all been looking forward to that and pushing for that, so thank you for that. I did have just two more questions, budget related, before we close our public hearing and move on to actually decision on it. We had last month had a presentation around a request from the community schools, asking us to financially contribute to an umbrella organization that would kind of like bring all of our new and existing community schools into one organization. And I'm wondering where that might fit into this process. I think it was a request for 60,000 or 75,000 annually, something like that. I have the JPA draft here somewhere in my pile, but I'm just wondering how we make a decision, because it seemed like it was a pretty well-received presentation. I'm just wondering if there's a way to incorporate that in here. And eventually, we will have to follow up with them and get back to them with an answer on their request.
I would probably put that on as an action item, and then I would obligate a portion of the ARPA funding for that, would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Then my request would be put it on next week's meeting, if, you know, for discussion and discussion consideration and decision, if that's, okay. And then my other question is just kind of procedural, like we know that June 1 is our first deadline, 48 hours or so, and then July 1 is the deadline for final, right? So what will the process of?
Actually, it's July 28th or 29th. So we have the month of July to get it ready. So we need a, everywhere where you saw March 31st, those columns would be changed to June 30th. And so we need to incorporate the final numbers. The cash fund balances may change in some of these, and so there's still going to be other tweaking that we're going to do in the month of July.
And I will also be presenting fourth quarter, because it does require a resolution for fourth quarter for year end, at the same time that final is coming out. So I'll be working on both at the same time.
Thank you. And I just wanted to double check to put ourselves on alert for when we might need to put extra time into reviewing or potentially even meeting for final. Yeah, so thank you. That's helpful.
Well, I, I mean, we have to submit, I think, final by July 1st. I could have sworn.
It says July 1st here, but traditionally, it's always been end of July. That's what I'm looking for. And you had seen it, but now I can't find it.
But in the printout that we got last week, it says July 1st.
It's the Department of Finance.
I might have.
In the middle?
Okay, I might have put this the wrong way.
That makes more sense, right?
Yeah.
After the, yeah. Okay.
Because it's always been end of July, because you get your Treasurer's report.
Exactly.
And the one that goes into play July 1st is obviously one we should hear by July 1st, or so is the preliminary budget. And of course, we also let all elected officials and department heads know that it's preliminary. It is subject to change, so still be very cautious on what their expenditures need to be. Obviously, you know, my department in purchasing will be doing a lot of the carryover purchase orders and renewing them for the year, but that, on top of that, there's other purchasers that have to be open in order for the county to function from, you know, the first responders to facilities and so forth. So always tell people to be cautious, because on the final budget, you know, some of those budgets may shrink, may not increase. So we got to make sure we're not over encumbering funds, you know, just to be safe, before final is approved sometime in September.
So the other numbers that we don't have is our insurance numbers for buildings and structures. New Mexico counties said that that number would come over in June, and so we haven't seen that number, and we need to make sure that it gets to the final budget.
Yeah, I got to make sure I tweak that area, just to make sure we don't have a shortfall to pay all our insurance coverages, including with fleet.
Commissioner Beal.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, I, once again, because I didn't do my report, because I wasn't prepared, but I do recall in the meeting, there is going to be an increase.
And I do foresee that coming, yes.
We all know that, right?
I mean, unfortunately, yes. Insurance has always cost.
5% or what it was.
Yeah.
It's in my notes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you for that. That's good information from your board meeting. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. Any further questions or comments? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 10:37 a.m. on Tuesday, May 30th. Phone is turned back off. And this takes us to item nine this morning, Budget Matters, and 9A is approval of the 2023-2024 fiscal year interim budget. I'm hopeful you approve. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, and this takes us to item 10, the Consent Agenda. Before we entertain a motion, are there any requests to remove items A, B, or C for discussion or questions? If not, then we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherinas. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, then our final item.
Before we adjourn, Madam Chair, if you could ask a question, and maybe the manager knows the answer. Does the Commission have a role in filling the vacant position in the judge? I know there's a panel, I know the Governor makes a final appointment, but does the Commission have a role?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Romero, no, the Commission doesn't have a role in that appointment. I believe District Judge Cannelli is resigning. I'm not sure when her last day is. She generally works out of the Raton Office of District Court 8, so she works out of there. So we've never had a role in the past.
Interesting question. Thank you. I think her last day is late June or might be mid-June. Thank you. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at 10:39 a.m. on May 30th. Thank you, everybody, and have a good, safe rest of your day.
Romero is in Denver with his mother-in-law. He texts that this probably be their last trip.
Okay.
Yeah. Prayers for them, because I know they're going through.